All right, good evening. We'll call this meeting to order for the March 14th, 2024, Apple Valley City Council Meeting. I'd like to welcome everyone. For any members of the audience who are signed up to speak, when your name is called, please approach the podium and address the council. The first item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. I would ask everyone to rise and join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic which is just one nation under God, indivisible, with no bounds.
All right, the next item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. And Tom, do we have any changes this evening?
Mr. Mayor, good evening. Only suggestion, we have no additional items, but we are suggesting that we change the order under our regular agenda items, five A and five B. Given the attendees here tonight, we'd like to have item five B go first.
Perfect. A motion to approve the agenda has changed.
Okay.
Motion from Councilmember Grendal, a second from Councilmember Bergman. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. The next item is our audience participation portion of the meeting. This is for items not on the agenda. We have a total of 10 minutes for this item. Anyone who would like to speak? All right, one last opportunity. Anyone like to speak? If not, we'll close this section and move on to the consent agenda. These items are considered routine and won't be enacted with a single motion unless a council member or a citizen requests to pull an item. Councilmembers, any items you'd like to pull? Anyone from the audience? All right, seeing none, do we have a motion to approve the consent?
Remove.
Motion from Councilmember Malander, a second from Councilmember Goodwin. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Repose consent items carry, and we'll move on to item five B, which is to present some certificates of appreciation for outstanding volunteer service. And Tom Law is gonna take us through this one.
Mr. Mayor, Council, good evening again. It is an honor to be able to do an event such as this. Apple Valley has been very fortunate to have a number of citizens that come forward and assist us with the many citizens advisory committees and commissions that you have put into place. And when some of those folks decide that it's time to retire, we certainly don't want to let them get away without thanking them for the years of service that they have put in. Tonight, we have a member of our Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee and a member of our Planning Commission that have decided that it's time for them to retire. Brent Schultz has been our Parks Committee member for quite a while, for almost 14 years, served as his chair since 2017. So that's a good long while, and he has been a consistent voice in helping to improve our park and recreation system. Certainly, we had the Park Bond Referendum here recently, and certainly was a major driver in making certain that the planning effort that went into that was done well and done successfully. Keith Deekman from our Planning Commission, his resignation happened because of work circumstances, but he had served on the Planning Commission for over 18 years. And during that time, a lot has happened in the city in the way of development. Had the opportunity to work with Chair Malander for many years as well. So just a key contributor to development in our city. Because of that tenure, he actually was involved in two comprehensive plan cycles that we do every 10 years. So he was certainly part of that. And just his thoughtful contributions to our city have just been amazing. So we can't let these two get away without a suitable farewell. And Mayor, I think you have some certificates to present.
We absolutely do. So we have, should we just bring them up one at a time? What do you think? What do you think?
One at a time.
All right.
Give her a spotlight.
I'd like to make some comments.
Yeah, well, let's get the certificates out, and then we will absolutely do that. So Brent, why don't you come on up?
Can I bring my?
You can bring whatever you like.
Make it trophy wife.
For the years of service and dedication to Apple Valley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Let's do this. Let's, I don't want to leave this picture by myself, because if anyone wants to slide over here.
Why not screw it on here?
The photographer says let's go. Come on down. We'll get some. Here, I'm gonna, hey, we gotta get this post-it note off of there.
Get the organizational stuff out of the picture.
Good when you just questioned me.
All right.
Thank you.
Well, I don't know. I'm thinking about joining that, well, with all.
You sure you don't want to stick around? It's only been 14 years.
We'll go too far, guys. We have another one to do. Hey, thank you as well for the service.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for everything.
Thank you.
I don't want to go on that way, okay?
You're not leaving because you have a crabby flying commission chair.
No, no, no. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
If you want to say something, then we'll invite them forward if anything they want to say.
I know we had at least one council member who might want to share a few words. And I guess if you have anything to share, invite you up to certainly share any comments as well. So Councilmember Malander, I know you had something you wanted to share.
Absolutely. I've had a special connection with both of these gentlemen. Brent is a former next door neighbor for a number of years, and got to know him both socially and professionally. I know he was very active with the Park and Rec Department. He's a thoughtful, involved guy, that he would step up and shoulder the responsibility for, it's always tough to find people who are willing to volunteer for anything. And he did it for a long time. And he was the same way in the neighborhood, concerned with the way things looked and the way things operated, the care of Lake Alamagna, where we both used to live. I had a lot of respect for the way he operated. And Mr. Deekman, I served with him on the Planning Commission for a long time. And Keith is a special guy in his own way as well. He's a successful business person. He told me he was wooed by his current employer for quite a while before he finally went with him. But I always found Keith to be extremely thoughtful and careful, considered with his opinions, and voicing them in a very reasoned sort of way, was a terrific asset for planning. I see some other planning commissioners come to support him, and it's always really nice to see. I miss my time on planning. That was a great experience. And I think we still have a vacancy. So I'm hoping that somebody would step up, because my own experience, it was terrific. It was good stuff, and I miss it. So thanks to both of you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Any words of wisdom to share with us as you move on to other things?
Happy trails to you.
Well, truly, whether it's parks, whether it's planning, you kind of become the first interaction either our residents or our businesses or developers have with Apple Valley, at least in this kind of setting, right? Starts with staff often, and then kind of makes its way through and sets the tone for, I think, as people are happy as they come in, right? Do we have a good relationship? And do we represent everybody? So it's a lot of hours, in some ways more hours than we put in on a project by the time you work your way through it. It's always entertaining to go back and watch those meetings and kind of flush out the comments. And we get the feedback here. And that time we get here, we get to a better meeting and a better decision. So thank you all. Councilmember Goodwin?
Well, we should also remember that Mr. Deekman put up with Chairman Malander for years, too. Was that pretty tough?
Yeah.
Never did Master Roberts Rules of Order right, either.
Thank you, both. We appreciate your service. So Tom, we talked about, Councilmember Malander mentioned openings. I think tomorrow is our deadline. Is that correct for anybody who might be interested in serving?
It is indeed, Mayor. The opportunity for citizens to apply for service on the Park and Recreation Commission or Committee, as well as the Planning Commission, is tomorrow at 4:30, I believe. So they can come in, you can get an application on our city's website, and they should be returned to our city clerk's office.
Great, thank you. All right, thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Feel free to stick around for the next item. This might be interesting for Planning Commission, if nothing else. But also don't feel obligated to sit through the next item either if you don't choose. So with that, we'll move on to the next item. If you guys want to leave, feel free, and we'll just pause for a second and let the room kind of settle.
Thank you, guys.
Take care.
Hey, Tom, Tom, you might want this. This is back here. This is.
Oh, do we?
Sitting back here.
Good point.
Oh, that's a good clear picture.
Wow, that is a very clear picture. That is a good picture.
Charles.
So Tom, we've got the resolution discussing some of the proposed legislation that's coming forward. So with that, I will just turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, this is an item that kind of follows on to a conversation the City Council had back in February with our legislators. Of course, the legislative session is underway at the State Capitol. There are a lot of bills that are being introduced, and we try to watch those as carefully as we can, trying to see those that might impact our city. Certainly, the League of Minnesota Cities is a great resource for us. They keep us surprised. Metro Cities, another group, Municipal Legislative Commission. So this is a busy time of year, trying to understand what is happening at the Capitol and things that we either are in favor of, opposed to, or just trying to learn more about. Tonight, we wanted to come to you specifically on some items that are related to housing and some legislation that's been, become known as the missing middle housing bill. So I'd like to kind of walk through kind of where the session has been so far. It is evolving quickly. In fact, some of the things that were written in the memo to you last week have probably changed since it was written. So I'll give you an update on where we're at with that. And then just some concerns that we have as a city about how this would change some of the planning that we have done in our community, and really kind of take us and many other cities throughout the metro area and throughout the state in a direction that none of us really ever intended through our land use planning efforts and comprehensive planning efforts. So just some background, there is certainly a concern over the lack of housing. A lot of people in the state have said we just don't have enough housing to accommodate the need that's out there, especially in the affordable housing area. So that kind of drove the conversation, resulted in the introduction of many bills this session that are on this topic. And as we read them, many of them just go too far and result in the loss of local control for cities such as Apple Valley. And there's some far reaching consequences that would come if these were to be enacted. So some bills that were introduced along the way, some of these are still active, some of these are not. But just to kind of give you a flavor of what we've been watching here this session, House File 4009 and Senate File 3964, one from St. Louis Park author, one from Woodbury. All bills that make their way through the legislature have a companion in both the House and in the Senate. That's why these bills have multiple numbers. This legislation would basically replace city zoning and land use authority with a rigid statewide framework that would, in this case, was going to remove public input in the residential development process. That actually has now changed. I'll get to that in a little bit. Some of these things that we saw early on were certainly of a concern. Bill would ignore the long range comprehensive plans that cities have put into place, would undermine our land use zoning and land use regulatory structure, and we would think to the detriment of health, safety, and welfare of our residents. And also, the densification that would come with some of these bills really doesn't take into account the infrastructure that the city has in the ground. So that was one set of bills. Another one, this was a multifamily residential development bill that would restrict cities from regulatory actions regarding parking, aesthetics, and other requirements related for multifamily residential developments. I'll define that term here in just a little bit. Would also allow multi-residential developments into any property that wasn't zoned industrial or agriculture. So we have a lot of business commercial property, and unfortunately, this one still is being retained with the current law that's being considered. So we'll talk more a little bit about that one, more limits on zoning authority. Here was one that had broad limits on the design standards and other aesthetic requirements that the city might have, would prohibit cities from having minimum square footage requirements, or what's called the floor area ratio requirements. Another one, called the Legalize a Federal Housing Act, would have mandatory upzoning on single family lots. And you'll see that that's still retained. So what happened new this week? So many of these bills have now been combined into a package, Senate File 1370, sponsored by Senator Port out of Burnsville. This is what's called the Delete All Amendment. Kind of started over, grabbed pieces of all the bills that I just summarized, and turned it into what they call the First Engrossment. And so that's the bill that is now active that's carrying, being the vehicle basically for all of these topics on housing. Single family zoning under this bill would basically be eliminated statewide to accommodate what they're terming middle zone, middle housing. Cities would have to choose at least six types of residential buildings, other than single family, that would be allowed on a residential, single family lot. So what do those mean? Well, middle housing is being defined as duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, fiveplexes, sixplexes, townhomes, stacked flats, courtyard apartments, and cottage housing. These are all terms that are defined in the proposed legislation.
Tom, can I just, just clarity? I know the answer to this, right? We talk about single family lots, and I think you might read this, think, well, we're talking about new construction, single family lots. But we're not talking about just new construction, single family lots, correct?
A good point. This is not just a new subdivision that would come into town. This would be all existing, single family lots. So the elimination of statewide, single family zoning would apply to pre-existing neighborhoods in the community. So all of the things that I'm going to talk about here would be existing lots as well as new lots that would be created. Good point. In addition, something called accessory dwelling units would also be allowed. They could be attached or detached, and that would be allowed on every residential lot. Cities would have to allow at least two housing units on all residential lots, and at least four units on lots that are within a half a mile of a major transit stop. So with our Cedar Avenue busway in place, that provision would apply to certain areas of our city based on its proximity to transit. Cities would even be forced to allow more units per lot based on a few other factors. This would get you to three to eight units per lot. And they are based on things such as, is the home going to be all electric and energy efficient? So basically, you get bonus units if you have units that are all electric and are not relying on gas. And the other term would be affordable, and they define affordable. And you get extra units for that. And then if you have both all electric and affordable, that's how you would get up to eight units per single family lot. In terms of parking, cities could not require off-street parking for units that are located within a half a mile of that major transit stop. You could only require one off-street parking spot per unit everywhere else in town. So that new unit that might come in that might have three or four people living in it, the city could only require one parking spot off the street, which certainly is a concern with, based on how we have handled parking in our community over time. And cities would be required to establish a minimum lot size of 4,000 square feet for all of those units that I just described. So currently, our typical minimum lot size would be around 11,000 square feet. In planned developments and other areas that we've developed, we have been less than that, but we have never been down as far as 4,000 square feet for a single family lot. In this case, it would be a single family lot that is forced to accommodate many more higher density units as well. So let's talk about, that was middle housing. Let's talk about multifamily housing. Multifamily housing is a building that would have more than eight units in it. That would be allowed in any mixed use, any multifamily, and any commercial zoning district. And I'll show a map here shortly about where we consider our commercial zoning district. But by right, apartment buildings would be allowed to be built in any property that we have zoned and guided for commercial use. Cities could not impose height requirements on multifamily development, less than the tallest commercial or residential building a quarter mile away, or the maximum height allowed in the code, whichever is greater. So for instance, probably the tallest commercial building we have is the Wings Building. I think in that zone, the building can be as high as 100 feet. This would allow a residential building, an apartment building, to be as high as that if it were within that quarter mile spacing. And if you have, if you're putting up a multifamily housing building that has affordable units, you get bonus height, another, up to 35 feet beyond whatever that first one required. There is a section that, it's intriguing, it's a little confusing, but I just wanted to make sure the council is aware, because I think this language has changed as the bills have gone on. There's an alternative density plan that would be allowed. A municipality that adopts zoning controls prior to June 30th of 2025, that would allow for residential construction leading to an increase in density of more than 100% in single family zones as permitted uses, is not subject to the requirements of this section. So there's an alternate provided, but how that would be implemented and how you would actually get to those numbers is hard to phantom. So that certainly, that language could be changed as we go on, but that's the current language in the bill that surfaced here this week. So a list of concerns, and I've maybe touched on a few as we went, but it definitely would restrict local government zoning and land use authority. It would significantly affect the character of our existing, single family neighborhoods by allowing two to eight units on every residential lot in our city, both pre-existing and new. It would reduce the minimum lot size to 4,000 feet, which would force even more units onto ever smaller parcels. It would eliminate the aesthetic standards and greatly reduce the parking requirements, and would require cities to accept accessory dwelling units on all residential lots regardless of their size. And just a reminder, I mean, land development within the city is guided by the city's comprehensive plan. It's a 10-year cycle that all cities in the metro area go through, and it takes multiple years to prepare a comprehensive plan, has many chapters involving all aspects of the services that we provide and the utilities that we provide. It's very well done, it's very inclusive, it involves the community, it involves many other partners. And unfortunately, you know, this would pretty much overrule things that we have in our comprehensive plans. So the citizens that were involved in our comprehensive planning, the community and the business organizations, school district is part of that with demographics, they base a lot of their needs from an educational standpoint, standpoint, based on the comprehensive planning that cities do in terms of the development that's going to come and the number of students that will be generated out of that development. And all of these comprehensive plans are submitted to and approved by the Metropolitan Council. So we have a firm basis, and we have an approved basis of what a comprehensive plan looks in our community. And this would pretty much overturn our comp plan, and would jeopardize our long-term planning efforts. I'd mention here specifically infrastructure. So our road network, our water mains, our sewer mains, our stormwater management systems, all of those are sized appropriately to handle the development that we've set forth in the comprehensive plan. And if that development turns out to be something else, something much more dense than we anticipated, then all of those plans would need to be redrawn to make certain that we don't have inadequately sized lines to handle that type of development. All of that would come at a cost to the city to do that, and there are no funding mechanisms within this bill that would help to cover those costs. And just to point out, the legislation places no limits on the number of units a given community would be forced to add. So once the rules would be reset, and the developers who do housing would begin to figure out how this could play out in any particular city, there is no cap that when you say you're done with the densification effort, this would be without limit under the current legislation. So here's a map of our comprehensive plan land use map. And for those not familiar with these types of maps, the predominant land use in our city is single family housing. Shows up as yellow on the map. The area that is shown in red is the commercial district of the city. We're all familiar with Cedar and 42, and a lot of the development that goes down County Road 42 to the east, and then another node of commercial development down on Pilot Knob in the Cobblestone area. So these are the areas that would be impacted by this legislation. This is the comprehensive plan land use map. This is what we call the zoning map that helps to implement the provisions of the comprehensive plan. Again, you can see the vast majority of our city is single family zoning. All of those lots identified there would be subject to the requirements of this legislation were to pass. A few more concerns, concerned about the environmental harm that might be caused by this added density will generate more impervious surface. Impervious surface results in more stormwater runoff. The systems need to be able to handle that. We have an extensive pond system throughout our city. The council is well aware that we have been having to make stormwater improvements over the course of time, because those regulations have become more and more strict over time. And so this would obviously, if it were to carry out and build a lot of additional units in our city, would certainly add to the stormwater contribution that we need to then handle and treat. So there are cost impacts related to increased densities over time, which could result in tax increases. And as I indicated, would allow multifamily buildings in all the commercial zones. And why is that a problem? Well, we have guided that land for commercial uses for a reason, and we have been attempting to build our tax base as well as our job sector. The goal has been to add as many head of household jobs to the community as we can. If we can have a good connection between the number of jobs in our community, and as well as the number of people that live here, we can match those up better. That is better planning. People will not have to commute as far to work if they can live and work in the same community. Our ratio of jobs to residents is pretty low at this point, and so the comprehensive plan calls out a goal of trying to increase the number of jobs in our community to help get that more on par. So this legislation would certainly affect our ability to carry out that goal. So what's next? Senate File 1370 was heard in the Senate Housing and Homelessness Prevention Committee this week. It passed out of that, as this new amendment has been proposed, and it's been referred to the Senate State and Local Government and Veterans Committee. The bill is not yet scheduled for a hearing, but they really only schedule out about a week. So it could come up very shortly thereafter. Worth noting that our local senator, Erin McQuaid, is a member of that committee. So people have contacts they can make to share their thoughts with her. That would be great. There is a companion bill in the House, 1667. That bill is sitting in the House Housing Finance and Policy Committee. Don't see any hearings scheduled for that one either. So what's for tonight? So the council was provided last week, or I guess Monday, but the resolution was written last week to oppose specifically housing, House File 4009 and Senate File 3964. We knew that things were going to be changing, so the resolution was actually amended late on Friday to include similar bills. And that's kind of what's happened here, is that we now have a number of similar bills that are advancing. So the resolution, we still think raises valid points. There is an attachment. There is a, an attachment to the resolution that outlines even more concerns, similar to what I had here. And what we're really trying to do is to, to let our community know of the impact that this type of legislation could have on the community. Everyone who purchased into a particular neighborhood did so based on what they saw there, and we just want to make certain that everyone, whether they like this provisions in the bill or dislike the provisions in the bill, that they're at least aware of what potentially could happen here. And would encourage citizens to, to reach out to our legislative delegation and let them know their thoughts here. These are the three folks who do a good job representing our city. We've, have a good relationship with all of them. We've had them into a visit with the city council, and I think local control is something that most of them voiced affirmation towards when they were here back in, in February. And we just want to make certain that they, in representing our city, hear from our residents about what they think about the particular bill. So I know this will change as time goes on. This may not be the final language by a long shot. I think even Senator Port from Burnsville, the chief author of the Senate side, has indicated that this, this language will continue to evolve, and we would encourage them to do that, to evolve it in such a way that doesn't do all of those negative things that, that we've identified here. So with that, open for discussion.
Commissioner Melander.
Where do you start?
First of all, these are my opinions, and I'm speaking for anybody else on council. Maybe I'm not even speaking as a council member, but my initial thought was, there's no doubt that marijuana is now legal. These are, these are incredible. I have never been a fan of the "we know better than you know" attitude of government, or really in any situation in life. And to have this thrown-out blanket for the whole state, removing local authority on many levels, is unconscionable. It's an egregious violation of, of representation of the people and, and people's right to represent themselves and making their own decisions. It's governed overreach. There's a, there's a law of unintended consequences, and this is just full of them. And noble, noble aspirations to solve this problem for, for the poor folks that need a place to live, it, it can ha, it can blow up. And you can't undo this kind of stuff. It's, it's, it's beyond comprehension that, that, who cooked this stuff up and, and voiced it this as, 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 as a noble humanitarian gesture? It's, it's unbelievable. I'm stunned that, that this could have gotten this far and, and received any credence and any, any support from anybody that bothered to think about it at all.
That's enough. Councilmember Bergman.
Thanks, Mayor. Councilmember Melander and I came off the Planning Commission to sit in this seat and to see what has taken place from the time I left planning to come here is, is, I think, an insult to our community. We were fortunate enough last week, Councilmember Goodwin, Mr. Benetti from Economic Development, and myself, went to the state Capitol and, and went to what they call the Minnesota League of Cities. There is, and Councilmember Goodwin can correct me if I'm wrong, but there was probably 260 people in an auditorium. We were afforded the, afforded the opportunity to meet with our elected officials that you saw Administrator Lawwell put up on the screen. Of those, one said they did not have time for us. And at that point, I was to the point where, you know what? One of the most major things that are happening to our city, which this city and the past representatives of the city have done an outstanding job doing in setting the, what we think is a great city, and we've done, I firmly believe from the start, when I moved in here and not being on any committees, they had done it right. And for a representative that did not want to take time because they were too busy to meet with their local reps and they live in this city, is, was very appalling to me. I have requested that before this stuff gets voted, that all three of those reps are in an informal with us. The two that met with us gave us half hour of their time. It was encouraging, but yet very cautiously optimistic as far as this goes. So as of right now, this is scary, but it is to the point where I hope everybody in the general public, and as well as you folks that sit on committees, send messages to your representatives that you do not like it. I would ask Administrator Lawwell, the bill, as it originally was stated, was opposed by certain groups. Tom, I'll let you explain that, and, or, that are opposed to this like we are. But there are also, would you explain who really is really behind some of this drive? And it's not necessarily a lot of elected officials, but other things that take place, if you would state that, please.
Sure. Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Bergman. The advocacy on behalf of the bill has grown over time. Last legislative session, there was a lot of discussion around affordable housing specifically, and that, the size of that group that was supportive was a certain size. Because the bill has been expanded to not just include affordable housing, but all types of housing, I think the size of the supporters has actually grown. So obviously, those who are advocates for affordable housing are certainly on board. Those who are builders, builders, housing, builder, housing-first organization in the city, or in the state of Minnesota, has come out in favor of this. The Minnesota Chamber of Commerce has come out in favor of this.
Amazing.
This housing would potentially allow more workers to come into the state of Minnesota, which might be a good thing long-term for, for businesses. Faith-based groups are in favor. The Sierra Club has come out in favor. AARP has come out in favor. So expansion of opportunities and choice, I think, is one that has certainly captured attention from those that think that more housing would eventually perhaps draw down the price of housing and make it more affordable for everyone. I would say that those ideas are theories at this point, not proven. I would think that developers who will be building this housing will be the ones who will look at the market conditions and will decide what it is they wish to build. And if it, if they can make a, more of a return on 4,000 square-foot lots and build more expensive homes on those small lots, obviously their made-return will be better. So for different pe, for different reasons, there are a number of different advocates that have lined up in favor of this particular package of bills.
Can I add a comment?
Go ahead, and then we'll.
And you heard that the Minnesota Chamber of Commerce is in, in favor of this. Administrator Lawwell, we have a Chamber of Commerce in this city. Ed Kearney runs it. Would you like to acknowledge what?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Bergman, I have had the opportunity to discuss this item with the president of the Apple Valley Chamber of Commerce, Ed Kearney, and I believe Councilmember Goodwin has as well. I believe his personal opinion is he does not agree that the, the bill will be a good thing for Apple Valley, but I will leave to him to, to go on record if he wishes to about what his thoughts are on the bill.
I'd appreciate him being there sometime. Thanks.
Councilmember Grindall, and then Councilmember Goodwin.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, a little aside with the chambers, I mean, to give up business land, I, I, I don't understand that for housing. I, I just doesn't, I can't correlate. But that was my point. So we have a regional government and a Metropolitan Council, and Apple Valley hits our goals or targets for affordable housing all the time, don't we? So we're already in this city being proactive to do these things, and now we're being told different criteria. We've been working under comprehensive plans and, and making sure we meet our, our targets. So I, I find it just unbelievable.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodwin.
Well, I agree with all the other council members. When this, when this first came out, I was just astounded. Let me just give you one example of what can happen. This is for the audience out there watching. And I wish our press was here, or not, which I don't understand. If you live in a single-family neighborhood right now, a lot of people do. I lived in Palomino Hills for 21 years in a single-family neighborhood. When my children left, I downsized because I didn't need five bedrooms, and I'm now in a townhome association. And we have plenty of those out here, and plenty duplexes and plenty of other things. But what people don't understand, I'm just going to put it very simply. If you own a single-family home in Apple Valley, and you're in this very nice single-family neighborhood where you got a neighbor on each side with a single-family home, and they got a backyard and everything looks nice, if this law passes, your neighbor, without any, any input at all from your local city council, could build an six-plex or an eight-plex on that piece of property. Is it as high as an eight-plex, or am I exaggerating, or a six-plex?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Goodwin, given the, the added bonus, I will call it, if you have affordable housing and if you have an all-electric house, you can, on a single-family lot, get to eight units. One thing that has changed from the original bill language to now is that the portion that had eliminated the ability of the city council to vote on that has been removed. So it could come through the Planning Commission, it could come through the city council. It will not be an administrative decision like the earlier bill language had included in there. The current version does not say what it used to say by eliminating that ki, type of public involvement. So people will have an opportunity, but unfortunately, they would come to the Planning Commission, they would come to the council, and the answer would be, the state law requires us to allow this eight-unit building in that particular location.
So they would come to us, and we could say, gee whiz, I'm sorry, there's nothing we can do.
That's basically the case.
I am, this is my own personal view. Now, if I were a state senator or a state representative who lived in downtown Minneapolis, maybe I could support something like that. But if I were a state senator or a state representative that lived in a city that has significant amount of single-family zoning, I cannot understand how any of them could even begin to think that this is a good idea. I don't understand it. And I don't know what we do about the next issue. I don't know how we get the word out to people. We have people in the audience tonight that are hearing this stuff for the first time. Tomorrow, they can go home and send an email to their regis, to their legislators if they want. But you know, a lot of people just don't pay any attention to the news or anything. How do we get this news out to the public? Again, I'm very disappointed that our press is not here tonight. Very disappointed. It's the most ungodly thing I've ever heard. I've had many, many years on this city council, and we do a lot of important things. We set budgets, we buy police cars and fire trucks, and we build fire stations and police stations, and we do all this good public safety stuff, and we plow snow, and we do all those things. The most important thing I've ever done as a city council member is to be a person that's involved in the zoning in my community. So we could set certain parts of the city for single-family, certain parts for multifamily, certain parts for commercial. And I am just astounded by this thing, especially when I look at the fact that the legislature, most of them live in places where there's a lot of single families. Now, there's some things that you probably well know, there's some, some efforts to have certain population levels not included in this. It started with cities up to 5,000, then it was 10, and there was an effort up to 100. Well, I guess if it was up for 100, I wouldn't worry about it. But I am just amazed at this. I just have absolutely no idea what the legislators who live in cities with single-family zoning are thinking about if they support this bill. I have no idea at all. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Bergman.
Thanks, Mayor. And I don't know, since the bills have changed, Administrator Lawwell, but when we were at the Minnesota League of Cities, and I mentioned who was there, in this panel, on this panel, was one of the sponsors of SF 3964. In the audience, comments were directed, no comments were directed to the petitioners, but the petitioners got to say why they sponsored a certain bill. And out of this one comment from the sponsor of 3964 stated that their sister could not find affordable housing, and that there was restrictions in the area that this sister was looking at. The next comment that came out of the mouth was this. My sister moved to, went to Lake Elmo, now remember the word affordable housing, bought two acres of land in Lake Elmo to build a house. That's the honest-to-God quote. You hear his comments, the audience went, kind of, you gotta be kidding me. And again, you, you've heard it, you all know, you know, what's the price point at what affordable housing is? I know Lake Elmo has a really nice restaurant, I know their land is expensive, but okay, if you're looking, in my opinion, if you're looking for affordable housing, yeah, you want to keep the house down, but I don't believe your very first thing you do is go buy two acres of land. I think you'd find a, a smaller lot to do this. So that's really, one of the things I took away is, is where do these people live that represent these, these communities? As of now, I'm still, I shake right now just thinking of what, what could really happen to this community, and I think it would be a shame. That's what I, that's what's out there, folks.
Thanks, John. Councilmember Goodwin.
Well, this gives you an example of a person that, the person that Councilmember Bergman is talking about was a lady who was a state senator from Woodbury, which is a beautiful city full of a lot of homes, a lot of them valued between one-half a million and a million dollars. And she made this statement. Now, if she'd been from downtown St. Paul, or downtown Duluth, or downtown Minneapolis, who lived in an apartment or a condo in downtown, and she made this statement about her sister, I guess I could understand it. But here's the crazy thing. Woodbury is a very expensive community. It's not nearly as expensive as Lake Elmo. And how she could come out with outrageous statement. But my point is, this is a brand-new state senator, this lady, brand-new. She's got elected to the state senate. She has no idea what's going on in her own city. I mean, if people understood that their neighborhoods could be destroyed, destroyed, I think they'd be very upset. My problem is, how do we get this information to the people? Or on television, that's fine. I hope our local news picks it up. I hope they pick it up on TV news. I hope they pick it up in the Star Tribune, the Pioneer Press, and all the rest. But this could happen, and if it happens, because it's a short legislative session, it only goes through, what, May?
We got six weeks left.
Six weeks left. This thing could pass before most of the people in the state of Minnesota even knows it's happening.
Councilmember Bergman, then we'll move on to the resolution.
Thanks. And one of the comments that I've, I made to our representatives that we got to meet with is, you know, as us as elected officials, we, we generally do the homework and do the check and balance and make sure what the residents want.
That's what.
And this, and this is what we're about.
That's why you have a council.
Right, right. So we, that's, but where I'm going with this is, I asked the two that we met with, have you done this survey? Have you sent out surveys to your rep, to your residents to get their opinions versus, it's strictly, it's strictly on your own, on your own merit? You've heard me say this before, I, I had great people that, that got me in the right direction, I firmly believe, and being on the Planning Commission, on the city council, I says, you check yourself at the door every day you come in this building. And again, you have to, it's not about you or about me, it's, it's about what your residents do. And I think the general population that are elected officials right now, it's the state of Minnesota, are not checking, checking who, who is, what the people of their community who is, what the people of their communities want. And I think that's, again, this council and past councils in Apple Valley have always done that, and we've done what we think is necessary for the growth of this community, because we've really, since COVID, we've expanded, and this city looks magnificent. But we could go in a different direction here in the next seven weeks. So thanks, and I'm done.
Thanks, everyone, for the comments. Thanks, Tom and John, for making the day at the Capitol. And Tom, for you, I know, I know how many hours you've put into going back and forth and reading different versions of legislation. Before we jump onto the mission, to the action item, Councilmember Melander, you said a noble mission, right? I mean, I've, I got myself through college building houses, literally swinging a hammer. Most of my professional career has been in either financing homes to individuals, helping first-time homebuyers get into homes, financing apartment buildings, trying to make those things as affordable as possible. So I understand the, I understand where we're coming from, right? We have not created enough housing units as a metro since the 08, 09 downturn. The industry stopped, and we never caught up. And in all those years we've had net in migration, so we're not keeping up, right? We're not keeping up on household creation. There is nothing in this bill, I'm a data guy, right? There's nothing in this bill or any of these that tells me any of this solves an affordability problem. That's the gap for me. If you could tell me that allowing these would drive units, and we have a theory that says more supply is going to drive price down, I don't know that I agree with that in this context, right? I don't know that we're going to do that. We have seen nearly 1,000 units of housing go in around our central village area in rental. Apple Valley is still sitting at a sub-2% multifamily vacancy rate right now. Ironically, I just read an article, three buildings in Central Business District of Minneapolis, apartment buildings built in 18 and 19, have recently traded at 70% to 75% of what it costs to build them in 18 and 19. What's that tell me? Different communities are driving out. Those units are available, they're not getting filled there. So what problem are we really solving? I don't think we're solving that with this one. Infrastructure costs, Tom, you mentioned it. If we have to replace a mile of roadway, right? I mean, it's a big deal, right? You've got to replace a few things. A mile of roadway is going to run you somewhere between $5 and $10 million to replace if we have to deal with that infrastructure. There's a 60-day provision in this, meaning you bring your project in. So let's say we take an office building that's on 147th, and we say that's going to be apartments. We're going to now put 300 bathrooms in there. Can we handle it? I don't know that today, but I have 60 days to make a decision on whether we're going to be able to handle that infrastructure cost or not. So even some of the timing that's in here, even with the rest of this goes, that timing doesn't work. I don't have time to make that decision through there. So that's an issue. Talked about community input, and I would say meaningful community input. This bill, while legislative session just started, I will guarantee you, this thing's been cooking since the end of the last legislative session with no public input, right? So now we have this compressed timeframe. I'm glad we took out the banning public input, right? That feels better, but if I can't do anything with it, what do I have? I'm glad you got a chance to hear, you have your voice heard. I can just come turn the camera on, you can go talk to the camera if you'd like.
Could you please repeat that? This bill would ban public?
This bill does not cur-
Did you say that again?
This bill, the delete-all amendment, removed the section that banned public input. However, the provisions are still baked into law. So you're right, I can go through my hearing process. I still have to get all those done in 60 days if we're going to, or it's just approved on the application. So yes, you have input, it's meaningless, right? So anyway, I don't know where I'm going with that. I would also say, this is not the only bill that's out there, right? While we're talking about this specific one today because of the impact, this is not the only bill out there that takes away local control. There's one on where homeless shelters can and can't go. There's a couple others that are out there that do the same thing, just maybe they're not quite such a big impact. So pay attention, right? I think that's the thing, reach out. Whether you're for it or against it, I don't care. Reach out and have a conversation. Legislators need to hear from us. I've shared with them that they're going to hear it one way or another, right? You open up to hear it now, or you're going to, you've got an election year this year, right? Every member of the House is up for election this year. They're going to have to hear it when they get in the neighborhoods. And so, do you want to hear it now, or do you want to hear it when you have a chance to do something about it? So anyway, not sure where I'm going with all of that, other than we're rushing another piece of legislation through that is likely to have some needed fixes. And right now, honestly, we're not fixing the ones we did last year either, so we're kind of stacking up some problems. With that, we have a resolution in front of us opposing the proposed legislation and similar bills, and I would make a motion to adopt that resolution.
Send it.
So I have a motion from me in a second, from Councilmember Melander. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries, and we'll get that off. Tom, thank you again for your work on this one.
Mr. Mayor, can we add one point here? Last year, we had people coming into their chambers who were so upset that we passed legalizing marijuana. We had nothing to do with it. So people are going to come to us and start saying, there's a house being built behind me. We didn't do it.
I want to just give you an example, not to go back to the subject, but where this works, right? In Planning Commission, you sat through this. We talked about the old par-three golf course, right? And, right? But there was a lot of back and forth, and there was a lot of passion in there, but we got to a spot that worked for developer, right? We created more housing units than maybe what we would have liked originally, not as many as maybe the developer wanted. We had something that fit within the neighborhood. We had something that the roadways could accommodate, and we ended up with a good product. We're not going to be able to do that under this, so.
That's why you have planning and zoning laws. That's why you have planning commissions. That's why you have city councils.
We also, we also had a really good chance to talk to everybody who was impacted, including the developer, including those who might want to buy homes, and including those who were going to be impacted by what went on around them. So we don't want to lose that.
And if I may comment to your comment in referring to the golf course, that golf course could have had 40 more lots put on it.
That's probably up there.
It could have been five-story apartment buildings over the whole thing.
But what was put on there-
Under this law, it worked.
Forty lots less makes a huge difference, and it's really nice. Just imagine all the work the planning staff did to get to what they have today over there. That's called true work and true dedication. We go under this new rule, if it all passes through, you could have gone and had those extra lots and had everything jammed in there like sardines, so.
All right, thanks, everybody. We'll move on to staff and council communications. And Tom, I know, or Tom and Ruth, I know you have an update from your recent trip. So Ruth, I'll just turn it over to you, and you can go where you want to go.
Okay, thank you. Well, I just came back from the National League of Cities, and I'm, we're trying to summarize five days, probably in about five minutes. So I have the privilege of serving as a National League of Cities Energy, Environment, and Natural Resources Chair. That was a position that I was recruited for, and when I show the pictures, it reflects all of us up here, it reflects staff. First of all, it's the 100th anniversary, so I brought you your scarves tonight. But I didn't know that Minnesota was one of the first 10 states that started the National League of Cities in 1924. I mean, we're talking about local control here. I mean, that's exactly what happened back then. 10 states got together, and they said, we need to have a solidified voice here on issues like what's before us right now. So anyway, they recognized Minnesota, on the League of Minnesota City staff was up there. So I was pleased to know that we were on the ground floor of the National League of Cities. And when I first started here many years ago, I wasn't sure about the benefit of belonging to the National League of Cities. But I certainly see it now, and when we're talking about local control, you know, with us, there is no fake news. People can walk right here and talk to us. We can't, you know, and walk up to the mic. There's no abstract for us. We have to solve big problems and small problems, because people think we can do that. But there's no abstract. If somebody says there's a pothole, it's a pothole. And so we have to deal with that. So anyway, I was pleased that we were actually initiators of something for the local control here. There were 3,000 people at this conference, and 1,000 of them signed up for the Capitol Day on the Hill. And so they went up on issues that, so, I had meetings almost, I mean, five days, but because I chair this committee, there's seven federal advocacy committees that we develop what the issues are to go to Congress to advocate for our local cities. So our committee, we have two issues, and first of all, it's the PFOS, the chemical issue, that we need municipal liability protection, because we didn't cause the problem. It's a man-made problem, but we're going to, we're having to clean it up. So once again, it's local people here dealing with issues that we didn't create. And so that was our first issue, and the other one was trying to get reallocation for funding of EECBG, another acronym, that, anyway, we hadn't received money since 2009, and so there was some funding this year that we're in for electric vehicle charging station. So anyway, I just want to thank staff for supporting me. Actually, of the 3,000 people, there's Dan Keely, who I would like to say that because I'm on this committee, it means I'm on the Board of Directors also. And so we started meeting on Saturday, and Dan Keely from Burnsville thanked specifically Apple Valley and Rosemont, because two of us were there, the mayor of Rosemont, for all of the mutual aid that we provided them in the tragedy that they had to survive. So he made a very passionate talk to the entire Board of Directors about mutual aid. So also because of the position, well, then I also, we used to attend the sessions that we wanted to attend, and now we are the sessions. I mean, our mayor had a session at the last meeting. So we're starting to be pulled in to be leaders at the National League of Cities here. So I was actually the moderator for advancing local action on climate change and community resilience. It was a panel of five federal agencies, FEMA, Department of Energy, several from there, and AmeriCorps. So that's what, kind of what I was doing. And like I say, it reflects, just because my picture reflects what everything we've done up here on sustainability and being recognized for those, what we do here, and then we make our decisions. And so, seven advocacy committee, we got to have our pictures taken with President Biden, so that's special. Here is the committee that, I mean, the session that I moderated. And then, one thing here, so, excuse me. So this kind of summarizes, summarizes that the League of Minnesota Cities, they sent me a letter a while ago. I talked for five days, sorry. Minnesota has a rich history of active participation in the National League of Cities, and your appointment reflects the importance of our state city officials in shaping federal advocacy efforts. Your leadership on energy, environment, and natural resources, federal advocacy committee, will not only elevate the voice of Apple Valley, but will also contribute to the broader conversation on vital issues affecting cities nationwide. So anyway, I just thought it was important, and Apple Valley was once up there again in front of 3,000 people. So thank you, everyone. Thank you. Oh, also part of this was sending letters to our local, to U.S. senators and to Congresswoman Craig about the PFOS issue. And so the mayor and I signed letters going there. And then last week, Charles helped change the letter up. So it was going to the Senate Public Works and Environment Committee, to the chairs there, and the ranking, the ranking minority members. So we're very active, and I don't, didn't mean to do this to staff, but anyway, thank you. And thank you, Matt, for all of the information about our wells and our issue with water quality here in Apple Valley, so.
Thank you.
Let me see, I think I covered five days in five minutes.
Nice. Thank you for being there on behalf of Apple Valley. So, Councilmember Bergman.
Thanks, Councilmember Grendel. Congratulations to your appointments to these. You've worked in the past very hard at the National League of Cities. The comment that I would like to make in support of this council and Councilmember Grendel is, at times, we, as council members and staff, have taken a little beating, because they say, some of the residents say, we're slow at this whole process of PFOS, or electric vehicles, or solar panels, or whatever's going on in our building. I've, we've all done due diligence, because, again, we're using taxpayers' dollars to do this kind of stuff. Just because the nation and the state are doing it, it doesn't always mean that it's going in the right direction. We've always prided ourselves, even when we do taxes, that we're not the lowest, and we're not the highest, but we're in the middle. And I think we still obtain that during these kind of things that we're out there, the eco-friendly stuff that are out there. So as time goes on, when we get questioned why we're not doing certain things to certain buildings, they are just taking time to see how the process works. But I've always been brought up that, before you go out and complain to somebody about something, that you look yourself in the mirror and say, am I having this at my house, or having something done at my house? And I think that's key to this whole thing. We've been elected, or committees have been appointed to sit on these committees, to hear the comments, and sometimes things take slow, and I hate slow. But when it comes to the committee that Councilmember Grendel's on, it takes time, and it takes knowledge in it, and there has to be funding for it. And I think we're in the right track, and I have no problem with the way the city is running and the direction that Councilmember Grendel sits on. So, thank you.
Thanks, John. Councilmember Grendel, you have a follow-up.
So, I mean, you mentioned, there's always room for more opportunities in life. But what I was trying to do there was, there are 200 cities who are not using this EECBG money, and we're going to Congress asking them to reallocate it. So I was trying to find these cities who don't even use the money, that there's no criteria for it, just 35,000 population or more, and very, very little criteria. And it was like, some people don't even take advantage of.
What's already there.
So our staff is on top of it. I think we're on top of it. I think it helps when we're at levels like this, that we're finding out about funding right away. So anyway, like I say, always room for opportunities. We're way ahead of the curve of a lot of cities that I saw.
Agreed. Thank you. Elsewhere, is anything else for, not, Tom?
Mr. Mayor, just one more item. We have learned of a designation by the Minnesota Real Estate Journal, and we're going to ask Alex Sharp, our economic development specialist, to come and give us a little bit more background.
Thank you, Tom. Mayor and council, we are a finalist for the Minnesota Real Estate Journal City of the Year. We did win that award last year as well. There are a number of Apple Valley businesses on the list as well for finalists. We've got everything from Roars to London Biurelli's Interior, to the Minnesota Zoo, to Times Square, also up for potential awards, depending upon the categories. Now, I will state, there are a lot of categories, and there are a lot of potential winners. And so we will, staff will certainly be attending the event, as we did with the mayor last year, and seeing where things shake out. And then we'll report back. In terms of competing cities, we are going up against five other cities, Rosemont, Farmington, Owatonna, and blanking on the fourth one, but it's quite small.
Shoot, I knew it too.
So we, we've got a good chance here, but with our win last year, we'll have to see where things come out.
Still an honor to be nominated a second year in a row for something like this. And so, Alex, thanks for your work on this one. And we certainly can get that whole list out. It's public out on the Real Estate Journal's website as of this afternoon, so we can send that list out. If you know of a Apple Valley business that's on there, it never hurts to just reach out and offer some congratulations. None of them are doing this looking for the award. They're just doing good projects and getting nominated along the way, so.
Right.
Yep. Thank you. Thanks, Alex. Any other items? Anything else from council? If not, we will move on to the calendar of upcoming events. Our next regular city council meeting is, date not on my list here, so bear with me one second. We are Thursday, March 28, at 7:00 p.m. is our next regular city council meeting. With that, we have a motion to approve the calendar.
I'm moved.
Second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that item carries. And we have a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Second.
All right. Motion from Councilmember Goodwin, and a second from Councilmember Bergman. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, and we're adjourned. Thank you.
Thanks.